Good evening. Welcome to the Valentine's Day edition, February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. This time, I will call the meeting to order, and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll just note at the outset, we're down two councilors tonight. Councilor Hawkins, I think, had a family commitment, and Councilor Clark had to go out of state for a funeral. So we're just three of us tonight, but that's a quorum, so we'll move forward. First up tonight, we have a presentation by Chief Jeff Watts of the Stillwater Police Department Citizen Appreciation Award.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilors. About two years ago, the Stillwater Police Department implemented a new award that we call a Citizens Appreciation Award. And the concept behind this award is, is that we would be able to recognize the great work of some of our citizens whenever they went above and beyond. And tonight, we want to honor one of our citizens, Mr. Damon Eugene Cox. Mr. Cox, what's going on, please? I'm going to read the award that we have here to present to Mr. Cox. Mr. Cox, please consider this Citizens Appreciation Award as our way of acknowledging your heroic actions on Friday, December the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. On that day, your neighbor, seven-year-old Rajah Brown, was playing jumper opener in her front yard. There were two other children in the yard with Rajah, but no adults were present. Rajah's family had recently taken in a two-year-old pit bull, and unfortunately, the animal attacked Rajah while she was playing. When you saw the dog attacking Rajah, you immediately sprang into action. You entered their yard and were able to get the dog off of her and prevent further attack. From there, you led all three children inside their home to safety. The pit bull pursued the children into the house, but you caught the dog and threw him out before he could attack them further. Sir, without hesitation, you placed yourself at significant risk to save Rajah and the other two children. Rajah did sustain multiple injuries from the attack, including puncture wounds to abdomens, hips, buttocks, and legs. However, the officers who responded to the scene said it was evident that because of your actions, Rajah did not receive life-threatening injuries. Your actions on Friday, December twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, were selfless and lifesaving. On behalf of the Stillwater Police Department and our entire community, thank you for placing yourself in danger to save the life of a child. Jeff Watts, Chief of Police, City of Stillwater.
Thank you. Chief, please. 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 Thank you. And we will continue to plan for the relocation of Fire Station Two and implement operational enhancements into the station design. We are fixing to initiate quarterly meetings between the Fire Marshal's Office and frontline personnel. And very, very soon, we will be conducting a new insurance services office evaluation, so we're excited for that. And this next one, we just, last week, completed it. We have a new Assistant Chief, Brandon Holcomb, and he's here tonight, so we're very, very excited to bring him onboard, he's going to do amazing things. And of course, we will continue to review all administrative policies and processes to find inefficiencies and outdated practices. And I would love to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Councillors?
No questions?
Chief, you were so thorough.
I didn't want to go too long, but I wanted to at least give you some of the information that was worthwhile.
It was wonderful, I truly appreciate all the updates and to understand what you all are doing. I mean, we're always so thankful and grateful for the work that you do, but it is really nice to see it laid out for us and to know what you're working on and what you've accomplished this last year is, it's really great. I don't know if I, I just don't think I have any questions, I'm just, thank you.
Now, the question I had was, are you fully staffed? And you answered that with seventy-four, so that's got to be...
We are excited.
Very exciting, yes.
And if there's some things that you would like to see in this report moving forward, please let us know, and we'll incorporate them and improve it every year.
I'm excited to see a new fire station in that report sometime soon.
Yes, sir.
We'll be talking about that a lot as a community over the next month or so.
Yeah, we're excited.
It's helpful to see those response times and see that map, and it gives us an idea of one of the reasons why it's a good idea to get that new station built.
Good, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Chief. Next up, we have nine B, award, approve an award of a unit price contract to LOP Construction for Husband Street Bridge Replacement. Mr. Carnes?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Way back in fiscal year fourteen, City Council approved several bridge projects. I believe three of those were completed. Two of those were put on hold, designs were about ninety percent complete when the funding shortfall occurred. And fiscal year nineteen, the City Council approved, reen, and approved those projects and the funding for the Husband Bridge over East Bimmer Creek and the Third Avenue Bridge over East Bimmer Creek. We got, with the engineer, they had to go back, codes change, double check some things, and then finish the design. We were just about to go out to bid when COVID hit. These were two of the projects that we put on hold because we did not know what the funding situation was going to be. We also believed there might be federal funds available for shovel-ready projects, and these were indeed shovel-ready. Those funds did not become available. So we have bid those, both those projects in January. We will talk about the Third Avenue Bridge in March at the next meeting. The Husband Street Bridge, we had two bidders. LOP Construction Company at almost one point two million, CP Integrated Services at one point seven million. The engineer's estimate was about one point three. We've reviewed the bids with the engineer, we think all of the bids are qualified and are good bids, and we're, the low bid is within the budget. And we're here to recommend that we award the contract to LOP. Happy to answer any questions, and I'll give you a motion when you're ready.
Councillors? Monty, just for everyone's memory, which part of, which Husband Street Bridge is this?
This is the one over East Bimmer Creek at the high school and at Brentwood. And we have worked with the high school on the timing of this project to, and we're working to get it done over the summer. We plan to start in May, and so that we'll have the least amount of disruption to them that we possibly can. They were very gracious to give us some temporary right-of-way to complete the project, good cooperation with our school partners.
What is your recommendation?
We recommend a motion to award a unit price contract to LOP Construction for the Husband Street Bridge replacement in an amount not to exceed one million, three hundred thousand, which includes a contingency, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract documents.
Thank you, Monty. Appreciate it. Councillors?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept staff's recommendation to award the contract. Please vote. With a vote of three to zero, that item is approved. It's exciting to be able to finally move forward on a project that's been in planning since 2014. All right, that takes us to item ten, which is ordinances. I've got a long ordinance title to read, maybe before I read it. Ms. Carnley, could you kind of give us a brief overview of this ordinance?
Sure. Ordinance thirty-four ninety is in response to code enforcement and city departments identifying a need to address the current junk vehicle ordinance. Currently, the ordinance falls short of providing a process for abatement of junk vehicles in the city. So in summary, the proposed change is clean up the ordinance and to improve the definitions. It creates a process by where the code enforcement officers can issue citations following notice to the registered owner or property owner where their junk vehicle is located. It allows for a hearing process for the junk vehicle owner and/or the property where the vehicle sits, and creates a process for abating.
Seems like it's a good thing to have options on what to do once you've issued a citation here.
Yes, and Code Enforcement Officer Paul Bostick is here to answer questions if the council has any additional questions.
Thank you. Kimberly? Councillors, well, at this point, I'll read the ordinance on first read, and then if you guys have questions, we can talk about it in a second. Everybody take a deep breath. Ordinance on first read, ordinance thirty-four ninety, an ordinance amending the Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter eighteen, Environment, Article five, Junk or Abandoned Vehicles, to amend Section eighteen dash one twenty-eight definitions by adding definitions for director, enforcement officer, and operable condition, amending Section eighteen dash one twenty-nine violations by providing that the enforcement officer has the ability to issue citations following notice, amending Section eighteen dash one thirty, Storing, Parking, et cetera, by providing that junk vehicles are a public nuisance, amending Section eighteen dash one thirty-one, General Responsibility for Removal, by changing it to Exceptions and setting out Exceptions to Article, excuse me, Exceptions to Section eighteen dash one thirty, amending Section eighteen dash one thirty-two, Notice to Remove, by changing it to rebuttable presumption and setting out criteria that establishes a junk vehicle, amending Section eighteen dash one thirty-three, Content of Notice, by changing it to Notice to Abate Junk Vehicle, establishing the requirement for a Notice of Junk Vehicle, by adding Section eighteen dash one thirty-four, Hearing, that sets forth the procedure for a hearing before the Community Development Director and providing for the appeal to the city manager, adding Section eighteen dash one thirty-five, Removal of Junk Vehicle, which provides for removal, adding Section eighteen dash one thirty-six, Notice of Removal, which provides for notification of the registered owner of a junk vehicle, and repealing all ordinances to the contrary and providing for separability. Councillors, any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to advance ordinance number thirty-four ninety to second reading.
Second.
We have an ordinance, we have a motion and a second to advance the ordinance to second read, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the ordinance is advanced to second reading. I will just say, we appreciate the code enforcement team here and Officer Bostick and all that they do to keep our community safe and clean and free of public nuisances. That takes us to item eleven, Reports from Officers and Boards. Ms. Carnley?
Two items, request for an executive session pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven B one for the, of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the employment, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of City Attorney Kimberly Carnley, and two, a request for an executive session pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven B four for the purpose of confidential communication with the city attorney regarding ongoing opioid litigation. It is the opinion of the city attorney that public disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you. Mr. McNichol?
Thank you, Mayor. Stillwater Animal Welfare is full of adoptable cats and dogs waiting for a home. They've recently received a large number of stray dogs, causing them to reach their maximum kennel capacity. If you're missing your pet or looking to adopt a new one, contact Stillwater Animal Welfare at four oh five, three seven two, oh three three four. Excuse me. That's it.
That's it? All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate the work that the Animal Welfare Department does as well, and there are a lot of animals that go through the welfare, Animal Welfare Department, and that's unfortunate reality of our community, and we certainly hope that folks will take a look and see if there's, I don't know anybody that needs another dog at this point, but, I mean, you're up to two, right?
You know, three's a charm, you never know.
Don't do it, don't do it.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
The city's spring household hazardous waste collection event will be held Saturday, April twenty-third, from eight AM to one PM at the Convenience Collection Center. During this event, residents can drop off household pollutants like oil-based paints, pesticides, herbicides, and household cleaning products and more, free of charge. This event only happens twice a year, so now is the time to start gathering up these hazardous items that can't be tossed with your regular trash. Visit stillwater.org slash H H W for a full list of accepted items. This really is a helpful, helpful day, so, April twenty-third, eight to one.
Thank you very much. Councillor Jaloski?
Yes. City offices will be closed for President's Day on Monday, February twenty-first. Trash and recycling will still be collected, but not yard waste. Make sure to set your carts out by six AM because collection routes can vary.
Thank you very much. I will let you know that if you're looking for an environmentally friendly way to save money on your water bill, you may want to purchase a rain barrel through the city of Stillwater. These barrels capture water from your roof and store it for future use. Using rain barrels also helps reduce the stormwater pollution by minimizing the amount of stormwater runoff that leaves the site. Keep an eye out for the rain barrel displays that will be put up in the city hall and at the library, or visit stillwater.org for details on how to order your barrel. I would also like to let you all know that we are going to, we are appointing a transportation oversight board with the passage of the new half-cent sales tax, or additional half-cent sales tax. We are going to set up a board that helps review projects, helps look over that sales tax money, and make sure it's going where the citizens of our community want it to go. And so there will be applications available on the website, stillwater.org, if you go under citizen boards and, I think it's citizen boards and committees, yes. There will be an application there if you'd like to help serve on the transportation oversight board. All right. At this time, I will recess the city council meeting, and we will move over to the Stillwater Utilities Authority. So at this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. First on the agenda is the consent docket, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the consent docket's approved. Under general orders, we have approval of a contract with Republic Services for acceptance, storage, and transport of recyclables and other refuse. Mr. Chris Knight?
Good evening, Mayor and trustees, Chris Knight, Waste Management Director. Before I get started, I'll point out I do have two separate motions that will have to be voted on separately. On November first, twenty twenty-one, I provided the trustees a report, an update, letting them know the recycling staging facility, letting you know the recycling staging facility was, the cost had increased from one point six million dollars to three point two million dollars. And I also informed the trustees that staff had been provided with a potential alternative solution that we felt that it was worth exploring and asked for approval to advertise two RFPs. The first RFP was for acceptance and storage of recyclable materials, transport of recyclables to a MRF, acceptance of yard waste, and acceptance of, acceptance of disposal of refuse. The second one was for recycling processing. Staff has received a total of seven submittals for both RFPs, and we believe the two recommendations I will be providing tonight match the two main objectives the Recycling Task Force was trying to accomplish with the recommendation to the trustees for the construction of the recycling staging facility. Those two objectives were to keep the recycling, recycling program operational and to have the recyclables processed at a MRF. I would also like to refer back to the December seventh, twenty twenty, meeting when the trustees approved Resolution S U A twenty twenty-eight, adopting a rate increase of eleven point five percent in twenty twenty-one and four percent in twenty twenty-three. With the new, two different options I'll be recommending tonight, I had the consultant that did the cost of service study for us, New Gen Strategies, look at those two options with those rate increases, to one, to see if the rate increases would cover the cost of the two recommendations, two, see if the rate increases could possibly be reduced and still cover the cost of the two options. After they, you know, they plugged the numbers into their model they used for the cost of service study, the approved rate increases will cover the cost of the two options with no additional increases. However, we won't be able to reduce those rates, those increases. Do you have any questions?
Trustees? So, Chris, to be clear, so what will happen here is instead of us taking recyclables to the current processor, Republic Services will pick those up and take them to Tulsa?
Will collect it, and Republic Services is going to build a, a structure that we can dump the recyclables into, which will be located out at the landfill, but it won't be up the hill, but the landfill will be down below. So we'll dump the recyclables there, and then they'll load them, and then they'll haul them to the MRF that I'm going to recommend tonight.
Okay.
We also felt, you know, since we had this potential option after we got the RFPs back, you know, everything that we collect can go to one spot, and we'll have one contract.
So is this a, is this a long-term solution? I mean, when we talked about building our own transfer facility, it's because the current contract's ending and we need some better option with what to do with our recycling?
Well, it'll be a ten-year contract with two five-year options, so up to twenty years.
Okay. So it's not a, just a temporary fix until we can get back on track with?
No, no, it's not a temporary fix, it's a long-term solution.
How do you feel about it? I mean, when we talked initially about building our own station versus doing this, we went with building our own station instead of doing something like this. I mean, given, I mean, the cost, we can't really build our own.
Right. I think with the increase in cost and everything, this is the best possible solution to keep our recycling program going as it currently is, and to get the material to what we believe is a better place to have it processed correctly.
Yeah, because that was one of the major concerns, was that the recyclables we were collecting weren't all being processed the way they need to be processed.
Correct, they have not been, and there's three MRFs in Oklahoma, and, you know, they all could have done a good job. The one I'm recommending just was at a lower cost.
Okay.
So Chris, I think you answered this question already, but just to be clear for the public, so the recycling at the curb, nothing will change from the customer's side of the recycling program?
That's correct. Nothing will change on the collection side, everything will happen just the way it's been happening for quite a few years now, we'll still collect it. The only thing that changes is to where we're taking it and to dispose, or to, you know, dump it temporarily, and then what changes is where it's going to be processed. That's really the only two things that are changing.
Are there any efficiencies offered with the Republic Services? I know one of the, some of the things we were talking about with the Recycling Task Force with commercial recycling and some of those things, is any of that included, or is this strictly kind of the residential pickup?
Well, it'll include, like everything that we take in at the Convenience Collection Center, any of the cardboard that we collect from commercial customers, it'll all go to Republic Services facility, and then it'll all go to the MRF.
And then from a billing perspective, the, the current escalators that we had in there is sufficient?
Yes, they will, they will cover the cost of these two options.
Okay.
You said it's a ten-year contract with two five-year options?
Two possible, two fives.
Is there a ability, or they, do they have any ability to change rates in the middle of that, are the rates fixed for the first ten years? What are the, how do the rates get adjusted?
Yeah, Republic provided a draft contract that my office is still reviewing, so we're still working through all those, but the idea is that the rates that they submitted with their RFP would be the rates, and there would be a CPI adjustment provision in the contract, as well as a fuel cost adjustment that structured more like a fee.
Okay. I'm just...
Because they're actually transporting it, once it's here, it has to go to Tulsa, so.
Yeah. Just wondering if there's a world in which we come back here in another couple of years and they say, well, we've got to, they've got to raise their rates, and so therefore we're going to have to pass on more, I mean, that, that would be my concern with using, going this direction instead of building our own facility, is that we're now a little bit at the mercy of them wanting to change rates, and we're going to have to deal with that.
Well, like stated, there'll be the normal CPI that's in our current contracts, and we do believe the fuel, potential increase in fuel is fair since they are transporting it to Tulsa, and fuel goes up, and, but outside of that, you know, we, we have a template, and the fees that are in there that you'll prove will be the fees that we pay, you know, outside the CPI and potential fuel.
Okay.
As opposed to be fair, if we built our own facility, we would have those fuel costs as well, so that increase would be something we would absorb, whether it was our fleet's...
So you know, with the increased cost, I did also have the consultant figure what the increased cost of that facility, what we'd have to do in that scenario, and we would have to raise the rates additional three point five percent from what we've already done to be able to potentially pay for that facility, constructing it. Then the other problem is, to be honest with you, we were going to have to hire four additional people, employees for the facility, and we're not having a whole lot of luck of hiring right now, so that concerned me of just having bodies to be able to operate it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we talked about those rate increases based on the idea of, well, this is what we're going to have to do in order to continue the recycling program the way it is and the way we feel the community wants it to be continued, and if this option allows that same goal to be met, then it seems reasonable to, you know, it's a different method than we were planning on using, we talked about that, but the goal is still the same. So like you said, we want to continue the recycling program, and we want the recyclables to actually be recycled, and it sounds like this is the best option we have to actually meet those goals.
And I do believe, you know, I did speak with several of the Recycling Task Force members, the ones that were able to meet, and those, there's about six or seven was the only one that attended the meeting, but they were all in favor of this option, they were okay with it. And I truly believe if the whole group would have had this option on the table, it's something they would have considered heavily, because like I said, they just wanted to be able to keep the recycling program going at the cheapest cost possible and get it to a true MRF. That was their main objectives.
I think you spoke that really well, I think that's exactly, kind of as we worked through that task force, it kind of crystallizes exactly what they were trying to get after, and I think it's maybe worth mentioning just to kind of remind everybody as we were initiating that task force and some of the initial findings in that task force, I think, is it seventy percent of our community that recycles, uses our recycling program, sixty, sixty to seventy percent?
Yeah, it was sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent, something like that, you know, that, that number really came from the people that are actually what you, you know, placing the cart at the curb, but, you know, we believe, well, we know eighty-five percent of the community has a cart, that, you know, they just don't place it out regularly, but at least sixty-seven percent of the people who have a cart are putting it out every week.
Yeah, I just think that speaks to how important this is in our community, that people want it, it was something the task force was really working hard to protect, that participation.
Yeah, if, those of you who, who may not remember that whole process, I mean, that was a long process of several meetings and a big group of Recycling Task Force folks that went through and came up with that goal of saying, we want to keep this and we want to get it to a MRF, and so, you know, I think this was a good example of, of community involvement, engagement, people coming together and having these conversations, and so I do feel good about the, the goals that we're trying to meet here are actually goals that the community set for itself, and so, you know, that, that does make me feel better about, about this option as well. Okay, so, Chris, what is your first recommended action?
Okay, five A, motion to approve entering into a contract with Republic Services for acceptance, storage, and transport of recyclables, acceptance and reuse of yard waste, and acceptance and disposal of city refuse at the prices indicated in this report, and authorize the general manager to sign the contract.
Thank you, Chris. Trustees, is there a motion on the item?
Motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote. Item's approved by a vote of three to zero. And then what is your recommendation on item five B?
Five B, motion to approve entering into a contract with Tulsa Recycle and Transfer Corporation for recyclable material processing services at the prices indicated in this report, and authorize the general manager to sign the contract.
Thank you, Chris. Trustees?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the item, please vote. That item's approved by a vote of three to zero. Thank you, Chris, thanks for all, your hard work and your team's hard work on, on having to deal with a change in the, in the, the plan. We appreciate your... That is the last item on the S U A agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn S U A, please vote. Vote of three to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting is now adjourned. At this point, I will reconvene the city council meeting at item thirteen on the agenda, and I would ask if there's a motion to enter executive session for the purposes requested by the city attorney.
Motion to enter executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter executive session, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the city council will now enter executive session. Here we go. Is there a motion to reconvene city council?
Motion to, motion to reconvene.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reconvene the city council, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, we are now back in open session after our executive session. Is there any motions regarding executive session?
Yes, motion to approve the employment contract with City Attorney Kimberly Carnley.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve an employment contract with Kimberly Carnley, With a vote of three to zero, that employment contract is approved. Is there any other action from executive session?
None.
No other action. That takes us to the end of the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council, please vote. With a vote of three to zero, the city council is now adjourned, and that concludes our meetings for this evening. Have a happy...